91, 92.
92.
Michael was 90.
I didn't want to sit there and watch it.
Please rise for the indications by Councilman Danny Seaver.
Let's pray. You're heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon us each and every day. Thank you for this opportunity we get together as citizens to plan the future of Hickory. Be with us as we do so and grant us some of thy wisdom to help us do it right. In these things we ask, in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Whereas the city of Hickory is committed to ensuring safety and security of all who live in and visiting our city, whereas home fires killed more than 2,300 people in December in 2012, and fire departments required to more than 316,000 home fires. That's why I got a thousand of those.
We trust you.
Whereas working, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying reported home fires in half. Whereas three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms. And whereas residents should install smoke alarms in every city and room outside each separate sleeping area and on every level of a home. Whereas Hickory's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protective education. Whereas the 2014 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Working Smoke Alarms Save Lives," test yours every month. Effectively serves to remind us that we need working smoke alarms to give us the time to die out safely during Fire Prevention Week of the year round. Therefore, on behalf of Hickory City Council, I proclaim the week of October the 5th to the 11th as Fire Prevention Week and urge all people to protect their homes and families by checking their fire alarm. And for many, many years, we did not have any home fire deaths or any fire deaths in the city. And one homeless person, one homeless person regretfully lost his life here in a fire. Had a homeless son.
Yes, sir. Or died a homeless.
But we are very proud that we've worked so hard to be safe. And they work hard to protect themselves. Thank you. And the Friends of Hickory Public Library. Good to see you. Good to see you, D A R.
I know.
Now, you're involved at the Patrick Bieber Library.
Yes.
Billy, you're involved at Hensley Library.
Correct.
As you could be president of the Friends of the Library. The Friends of the Library at both of those locations. Whereas Friends of Hickory Public Library raised money to enable our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. Whereas the Workers of Friends highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library, both units, is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of life, learning, and connected thoughts and ideas of others. Whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. Whereas the Friends gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and betterment of our community. Now therefore, on behalf of Hickory City Council, I proclaim the week of October the 19th, 25th, as Friends of Libraries Week in Hickory, and encourage all who might don't save to consider making a contribution to Friends of the Library, which will make this a better place to live.
Exactly. We are here representing about 250 Friends members who are all volunteers.
It is a wonderful group that has done a lot of great things. Most recently, we collaborated there at the Patrick Bieber with the new council.
Yes.
We're developing a recognition wall for the treatment, particularly artistic, if I recall. I probably, I mean, something that I may do next year. What were your books, Louis?
I just give my own book.
How many were there?
About 800 and something. 8,000, I think.
I know for a fact that our people, people come to me and say, "When did the books sell?" This is something a lot of folks come forward to.
It is.
And it's wonderful. What was our last ranking in the state in terms of quality of our libraries? Shannon or Bird related by my saw.
Way up there. We're one of the first.
Well, we really are wonderful. And that is a great thing. The ability to read well, the love of reading is something that will serve every person throughout their lifetime. And I thank you all for your efforts.
We thank you, thank the city, but allow direct.
You saying good things about Louise?
That's right.
She said something like magnificent. I heard that part. Well, we think so too. That's my favorite part. He said, "Fire police."
And he's glad I love working together.
Mr. Lael is not here tonight. Something about a wedding, I don't know. He's got to quit, he's got to quit being an answer for weddings. We have two people requesting to be heard. I'm missing something here. Oh, I am sorry.
Your other favorite part.
Did you miss it? Lou Barry, President of North Carolina APWA Solid Waste Division will recognize Sherman Stinson Public Services for a special.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Barry, City Council members. I'm Lou Barry, Public Works Association President. We had six nominees this year for Solid Waste Coworker of the Year in the state of North Carolina. The board reviewed all of the nominations and selected Sherman Stinson from the city of Hickory to be the Solid Waste Employee of the Year. And we're here to present him with applause.
Okay. Sherman. Sherman, you're not going to demand a speech now. Lou, I'll leave you.
Put me on the spot. I'd like to thank everyone who had a hand in this. This isn't just an award just for myself, it's also for all the individuals who came before me that helped me, guided me through the whole entire process. It's also an award that I'd like to give thanks to all of my supervisors who put me in a position to succeed, for the great bunch of guys that I work with who make my job easy during every workday. My father passed away five years ago. This award is for him and for my mother, who always said, "Put your best foot forward, work hard, don't worry about people giving you any type of recognition, and just do the best that you can, and you will be recognized at some point." So I'd like to thank everyone who has helped me in my journey throughout my whole entire life, you know, for this.
Well, let's get a picture of the whole city council alongside these two good folks. Okay?
That sounds good.
I think.
Some of that good luck will wear off.
Sherman, I think you also qualify for the Humility Award of the Year. Did y'all hear that?
No, he's really not that humble.
Okay, we have two people requesting to be heard, and we'll start off with Mr. Larry Poe.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Barry, and Mr. Crone, Attorney Crone, thank you for giving me an opportunity to address two issues that I have concerns about. I will say, one is positive, and the second one is important for the safety within our city. The first thing I would like to say is, I would like to publicly thank Mr. Chuck Henson for taking care of a concern that I had in the men's restroom here at City Hall where there was no latch to secure the door in that men's room. The hanger for your coats and for your bags was on the outside of the door, to me was asking for trouble. Because if you're in there, you're using that restroom, and someone wants to come in, snatch whatever's hanging on the outside of the door, they can be in and out, never caught, never stopped. So I brought that to his attention after the last city council meeting, two days later. I came back up to check to see if things had been taken care of, and they were. And I greatly appreciate that, because no matter what the situation is, I can always call Mr. Henson, let him know about the negative situation, and he will address it very quickly and will contact me to let me know that someone is working on whatever I made him aware of. Another prime example is the sidewalk there in front of George Lee Foundation on Fourth Street, Second Avenue. You had to cross about a fourth of the way in the intersection where tractors and trailers traveling Second Avenue was beyond that sidewalk, so you either had to wait, had to cross behind them, not knowing what was coming over the hill, and whether they were going to be able to stop or not. He immediately contacted the state, because that was a state road. Within a week, they were out there, they corrected that situation, and I greatly appreciate that of Mr. Henson. The second thing that I wanted to address was, I talked to you over a year ago about sidewalks in our city during the snow season. I found that there is an ordinance on the books that have been there for decades that in my opinion needs to either be enforced or modified in some way, because residents in the city is responsible for public sidewalks that belong to the city beside their houses, in front of their houses, and are supposed to get out and scrape them. But we as a city is looking for senior citizens to move here and stay here, and in my opinion, they're unable themselves to get out and shovel those sidewalks and clear them as the city ordinance requires them to do. So if it snows and you're walking, you have to walk in the roadway, because the sidewalks are not clear. For me, as a visually impaired individual, that is very hazardous. So I would ask that you take the recommendation that I made to you over a year ago, buy the same type of equipment that the city of Newton uses to clear their city sidewalks, because what I know to be true is that if it sleet, if it snows, you immediately send public works employees down to Union Square, First Avenue, both sides of the roadway, to scrape and salt those sidewalks.
Three minutes.
So I would ask that you, by purchasing the proper equipment that could be used to clear those walks like Newton does, then I think it could be nothing but a plus for this city when you're trying to get residents to move here and stay here that are unable to do it themselves. So I look forward to a response to what you're going to do about either the ordinance in enforcing it or changing it so that our sidewalks are taken care of when it snows, because I think we're going to have a bad winter this winter. Thank you.
Mr. Berry, can we look into that and get a report on that? Well, I'll tell you, time and again, the Public Works Department just does a great job, and I'm going to share with you the experience I had. A few years ago, many of you know that my business is seasonal, so my wife and I leave for some time over the Christmas holidays, because people are not interested in signs. They got Christmas trees, Christmas gifts, signs, it's not important. So, but I got a call from a lady about December the 15th, and she said, "They've done a bunch of work on the trees over there on that road that goes through the cemetery, Oakwood Cemetery, along the creek where the YMCA is." Said, "They've done a lot of work," said, "but there's one tree limb that's sticking way out over that road," and said, "I'm concerned that a car, or I don't know, a bicyclist or somebody could get hurt on that limb." Said, "Can you look at it?" I said, "I sure will." So I made a note of it, but I left on vacation. I got back in about January the 3rd, and I called the lady, because, well, I came back in and I drove down through there and I didn't see a limb. So I called the lady and I said, "Tell me about that limb." No, I said, "This is Mayor Wright calling about that limb." And she said, "You are the man." She said, "Within 24 hours of my call to you, that limb had been fixed." And I said, "I do what I can." Thank you, Chuck. You guys do a great job. Mr. J.D. Ross.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you, my name is J.D. Ross. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Old Lenore Road Business Association, and I came and spoke to you guys a few months ago just to let you know who we were and what we're up to. And I'm here tonight to give you kind of an update of what we've been up to over the last couple of months and let you know of something we have going on in a couple of weeks. We've been working to attract attention to our district and get people over to our side of town and get people driving up and down Old Lenore Road. And we've got an event planned for Saturday, October 18th. The association, along with Jeff Hale, who some of you may know, have worked a lot on this event. Jeff has a vision for our district becoming kind of a center for arts and music and food and that sort of thing, as other cities have done similar things. I know in Charlotte, the South End neighborhood in Charlotte was kind of like Old Lenore Road. It was kind of an industrial diminished commercial area, and then someone came in and started buying up real estate and bringing in artists and restaurants and people like that, and made it a cultural center of Charlotte. So we've been working kind of towards that end. And the first event we have, hopefully of many more to come, will be Saturday, October 18th. We're calling it the Artistic Revival on Old Lenore Road, and I just want to let you know that it's going on. I have some flyers here that I would love to leave and make available to folks. Dana has been kind enough to share that on the city's Facebook page, I believe, so people know about it. It's open to the public. It's going to be a family-friendly event. We're going to have music. The Hickory Music Factory is coordinating music. We're going to have, I think there's 10 or 12 musicians that'll be playing throughout the day. There'll be over 50 artists displaying their work. There'll be tents set up outside and inside, and then onsite food purveyors who are going to provide food and drinks for folks. So it should be a fun day. Again, it's Saturday, October 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's behind the Strip Center where, let's see, there's an antique store in there now, Plum Prairie Consignment Store used to be in there, if you know where that Strip Center is. Around the back, there's some big, like loading bays, and there's a big open field. And inside that warehouse space is where a lot of the showcase is going to be of the artists and out in the open field areas where the tents and vendors and food and that sort of thing will be. Just want to let you know what's going on. Hickory Music Factory is doing music and proceeds from the event. There's no charge to get in, but any food that's sold and any art that sells, the artists have agreed that 10% of proceeds from the music and art are going to go back to the Hickory Music Factory and also to the Hickory Soup Kitchen. So hopefully, we can raise a little bit of money and do a little bit of good in our community while at the same time letting people know we're there, letting people know that Old Lenore Road is a good place to be, it's a good place for business owners like my wife and I are, and it's a good place for, hopefully in the future, music and food and that sort of thing that may be kind of a hub of that sort of area. So want to invite you all to be there. Jeff would love for some Hickory folks to be there. It should be a good crowd. It's all afternoon, free admission, as I said, so I would love to see you there. And I'll leave some of these maybe on the table out front for folks to see. And we also have a Facebook page now for the Old Lenore Road Business Association, so please check that out and like us on Facebook. We've got an event, like an event page on Facebook for that also, so you can get more information, interesting names of some of the musicians and some of the food vendors and that sort of thing, so you can kind of see who will be there. There'll be a lot of great artists and that sort of thing, so I would love to see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I want to let you know, I invited every friend I have on Facebook to that event.
Good.
About 30 or 40 said they were coming.
Awesome. That's great. Thank you, appreciate that.
Danny, isn't it competing with Home County?
No, no, that's, that's.
This week.
Oh, that's right, this week.
It's a great Hickory class. It's a week from Friday.
Classic.
Yeah, it's a week, it's on Saturday, the 18th.
I'd like to be there.
Great, thank you.
Okay, approval of the minutes of September 16th?
I move second.
Notion by Gess, second by Seaver, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Motion to approve the minutes of September 30th?
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Zaga Ruddy, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading?
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion was by Seaver, second by Patton. Anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mayor, could you remove item L?
Item L. Motion to approve, anything else to be moved from the consent agenda?
Move approval, consent agenda with the exception of item L.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Motion by Meisner, second by Seaver.
Mayor, I'm going to excuse myself from any discussion or disposition of item L. I don't think it's a conflict, but it may appear to be a conflict. As you all know, I've just merged with the law firm that is making that request. I didn't know it was on the agenda until I went to the agenda meeting, and I'll ask Ms. Doolittle to sit in for me for consideration of that particular matter.
I move approval of item L.
Second.
Motion by Meisner, second by Seaver, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. And that property's looking good. We have a lot of great things going on in this city. It's just wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As it states in your agenda after a public hearing on March 18th of 2014 at your April 4th city council meeting, council chose to enter into an economic development agreement for the purchase and sale of real property with a company called M A B. The intent of that agreement was to sell to M A B approximately 10.099 acres of city-owned property which sits at the intersection of Highway 127 and Cloninger Mill Road for a price of $900,000. Now, the agreement included 120-day inspection period for M A B to be on the property and make sure that it met their requirements. That was extended by city council to September 26th. You did that at your July 15th meeting, because the city had actually, over the years, deposited some debris on that property. some debris on that property from around the city. And per our agreement with them, city staff was removing that debris. We were a little bit behind schedule, so we gave M.A.B. some additional time that you all approved. M.A.B. had agreed to develop the property as a grocery anchor shopping center with stipulations that its developments, or that the development itself contained certain aspects, and those had been reviewed and approved by city council and were actually an exhibit to the economic development agreement. As the deadline approached, we were notified by M.A.B. and in your agenda packet is the letter which we received from their council stating that they wished to terminate the economic development agreement. And so they have the right to do that. There isn't any action required by city council, but we did want to make council and the community aware of the disposition of that agreement.
Do we need to approve that just for the record?
No, you don't. I mean, they can, they have the right to basically withdraw, and that's what they did, so.
They did ask for an extension, right?
Sort of. They basically said if we could, we would continue to market the property for free, and that was not in the terms of the agreement. So from a staff standpoint, we didn't feel like that was a viable thing for them to continue to do.
Did they, did they say, "We want to continue to market for free, but we want our $15,000 back"?
Yeah.
Huh?
Yeah.
Oh, well, that...
(laughing).
I want to make it clear to those reading this that we didn't, we never set out to have a grocery-anchored shopping center. We asked for bids to develop the property. Isn't that right? So we never had any, we're not in the business of saying, we were trying to get grocery stores or drugstores or any kind of particular stores here. I guess if we had an urgent need for a particular kind of store, we might, we might change that tune a little. But we're not in the business of specifying. But when they came forward and said they wanted to make a deal happen out there, we asked what kind of deal. And as part of the stipulations, they agreed that it would be a grocery-anchored center. At the same time, we're not out there recruiting grocery stores. I, for one, am very pleased that we have a new grocery store going into southwest, which if we have a food desert, that's it. And we're getting a grocery store in the southwest. But there again, that was not something we set out to do. We didn't recruit for it. It was not a stipulation. So where are we? Are we going to... Now, we had an offer for a donation. Does anyone want us to pursue getting that donation if we still have it out there? Or do we want to re-market the property? Start marketing it again, looking for somebody that could develop this property? How long have we had, how long have we had this in process? About five years?
Yeah, give or take.
I'd like to see us try to go for that donation. And then we can start the process that will still be a three- to four-year process of developing that park. Does anybody want that to be the margin orders? Or do we want...
Well, I mean, the sign's still up. The sign's still up. But we don't take anything, you know, any offers right now.
As long as we don't have any stipulations that we can live with. We could live with a grocery-anchored shopping center. Probably could live with a drugstore. But why in the world we want another drugstore? I don't know. But, so the sign's still up.
Sign's still up, and we just take what comes. Consider what comes.
Has there been any interest from any apartment developers or condo developers for that piece of property?
I haven't heard of any.
So the only interest that we've had in the last five years has been the grocery store anchor.
And the donation.
And the donation.
I think we just continue to explore our options.
Right. Till something comes forward.
You want to say we want to diligently explore our options? Okay.
Well, when the sign comes down, maybe people realize, hey, it's open enough.
Well, the sign isn't coming down, right? They never put a sign up.
Sign with Dave Lee and Eddie's phone number's been up there for five, six years.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking it was... I was thinking that was a different sign than that. Call Dave.
Okay. Departmental report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask city's deputy city attorney, Arneeta Dula, to come to the podium and present this in more detail. I'll give you just a quick overview of what's in your agenda. What Ms. Dula's going to present to you is a parking agreement between the City of Hickory and O.M.H. Holdings. And this all relates to the development of the old Hickory Mill, the Lyerly Mill property, which we all know and are excited about becoming Transportation Insights headquarters. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Dula.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, city council members, Mr. Cronin, Mr. Berry. Stand before you tonight to present, hopefully, a brief report on an agreement between O.M.H. Holdings LLC and the City of Hickory. And there are no bells or whistles tonight. No PowerPoint presentation, just me and the paper. To delve into the background a little bit, as you're all aware, O.M.H. Holdings acquired the Lyerly Mill property for the purpose of constructing a corporate campus and corporate headquarters. This will redevelop the area. And in addition, O.M.H. intends to develop certain recreational facilities on the corporate campus. If you recall, part of the purchase even involved purchasing some air property, a portion of which had been bequeathed to the City of Hickory, to the library in particular. And so with those number of parcels, it will be an extended campus that will include the main building for Transportation Insight as well as other areas of the corporate campus. Well, of course, they have to have parking. And as part of the redevelopment, O.M.H. determined that it would be in the best interest, their best interest, and also in the city's best interest, to develop a public parking lot to serve both the City of Hickory and its citizens, as well as the employees and tenants and visitors of O.M.H.'s campus. Therefore, the city and O.M.H. decided, determined to enter into an agreement, which is permitted under North Carolina General Statute 168-458.3, which actually allows or permits the city to engage in downtown development projects through a public-private partnership. This statute actually allows, if the city determines that the project will have a significant impact on the revitalization of the central business district, then a municipality is able to enter into an agreement with a private developer for construction, acquiring property, owning property, and operating the downtown development project or the specific facilities. And the contract actually can even stipulate that the developer will construct the entire project or a portion of the project. Therefore, the proposed parking, joint parking agreement between the City of Hickory and O.M.H. Holdings, it falls within the statute's provisions because the area is in the urban revitalization area, which also, as I stated, includes the central business district. It allows the City of Hickory to enter into the agreement with O.M.H. Holdings to actually construct the public parking lot, which, as I have stated, will serve both entities' needs. The lot will also provide parking for the proposed walking trail. That's something that's been a part of Inspiring Spaces, should that come about. It would provide parking for not only our residents but visitors who are coming to downtown festivals and other events. And as I stated, it will also provide parking for the company, for O.M.H. Holdings and Transportation Insight. Per the statute, the city will contract with O.M.H. to actually design and bid out and construct the parking lot. In addition, there will be attendant improvements to the infrastructure, mainly Main Avenue Way Southeast and also a portion of Highway 27. Main Avenue Way will include some widening, and then on Highway 127, there will be construction of a left-turning lane because people have to get into the parking lot. And that will be one of the main, one of the ways for entry and for egress and ingress into the parking lot. Once the lot and the attendant infrastructure facilities have been completed and approved with the city's approval, O.M.H. will then convey the lot to the City of Hickory. And the city will reimburse O.M.H. for the parking lot's development and the construction cost. The figure for that, for the construction, is a total of $639,629. Of that, $191,236 is for the upgrading of stormwater facilities. The property in question equals 1.84 acres, and it was recently purchased for a total of $650,000 by O.M.H. The recommendation is that council will not only consider but approve the parking lot agreement. Also, I mentioned add that the permitting the private developer, O.M.H., to construct the parking lots, design, and bid it out will ensure that the entire project flows together. Therefore, it will be a singular design, and the entire area will be revitalized. There will be attendant landscaping and other amenities to the parking lot that will make that corner look very nice, be very nice. So again, the recommendation is that council approve the joint parking lot construction agreement between the City of Hickory and O.M.H. Holdings. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain them.
Does that include lighting and other such things as that?
Yes. If you will, there's a provision, a paragraph in the agreement where actually, O.M.H., well, the city is actually going to work with Duke Energy for the construction of the lighting of the public parking lot. O.M.H. will actually do their own lighting for the campus facilities and do that at their own expense and their own costs. Also, part of the agreement, though, will include a cost-sharing between the City of Hickory and O.M.H. Holdings for the utility costs of the lighting for the public parking lot.
And do we know, is that, will that parking be free there, or will that be paid or what?
Primarily, it will be free. There may be some attendant costs depending on the nature of the activity, but generally for the citizens and residents who will use it, there will be free parking. However, there is a provision in here which permits the city to actually assess costs if necessary, if that need arises.
Are there time elements involved in this, like when they use it? And then the city uses it?
Yes. The, O.M.H. will use it from 7:00 to 6:00, I think. 7:00 to 6:00, or 7:00 to 5:30 p.m. After that, the parking will be made available just to the general public, of course, also on weekends. And there may be times also when O.M.H. or one of their tenants may request to use the parking lot for special events. There is a process that is outlined in the agreement to cover those situations where they actually have to request and obtain the consent of the city to utilize the parking lot for special events.
And it may be in here. Do we know how many spaces it's going to be?
Yes. 158? I'm sorry, 168. It was 158 for a long time, then changed. 168.
So basically, you're getting a public parking for the cost of just building the parking, and they're donating the land, which just ironically has about an equal value. The parking lot construction will be, as Ms. Dula said, $639,000, and they actually paid $650,000 for the little less than two acres that it'll be sitting on. So it's almost a 50-50 partnership. Mr. Hanson was before you a couple of meetings ago and kind of laid out the design. And we, at a staff level, felt it important to actually spend a little more money on that parking lot than would be required if it were just privately used because of stormwater issues. You all have been on this body for a period of time, remember some of the issues we've had on the other side of Highway 127 with stormwater in parking lots. And so Mr. Hanson thoughtfully looked at that and determined there were some things we could do under the ground in that parking lot that will improve the flow of water across 127, underneath 127 and downstream where our stormwater system is fairly antiquated. So we felt like that was a good, smart investment to recommend to you all as part of this project.
How will we access from the parking spots, for example, the events occurring here at the city parking lot across the street for most?
So like Oktoberfest?
How would you get from there? Yeah, how would you get from there to Oktoberfest?
Well, you can either, you can either cross 120, well, the, what you do is you go underneath the rail bridge and the Main Avenue Bridge on the sidewalk, and then you cross at the light at 127, which is right there by the fire station.
If there's that looped pedestrian walkway, you can just...
Yeah, or you could, or you could actually walk across 127 on Main Ave., and it's a sidewalk on the bridge and everything, and come right down there past Fire Station 1. It's already got sidewalk all the way to Union Square right there.
If you heard a whistle, you could walk along the train track.
We also, we also, in this parking agreement, as Ms. Dula mentioned, the plan is for O.M.H. to construct a soccer field, athletic fields that'll be lit, as well as gymnasium. We've heard all that in the presentation when we entered in the economic development agreement, when you all entered into that with O.M.H. and Transportation Insight. And this, this, one of the wins for the city is also access to those fields, which, as Mr. McLeod will share with you, he always has a need for lit fields and gym space. So we feel good about the fact that we're going to have some additional space there to use for our recreation project, programs, as well as other entities in the community that will be accessing that. That's outside of Transportation Insights employees, just neighborhood, you know, neighborhood groups, community groups.
That parking area, you said we'd be sharing access, and it would be public parking after 6:00. Is there any part of it that would be public could, public could park in during the day, work day? I was thinking there's access to...
Not that exact parking lot, but if, when you look at the entire property, the city actually owns the sliver of property that sits right next to the embankment.
Okay.
And that will be developed, not under this agreement, but that will be developed as public parking, that will be public parking 24/7.
Is it going to be done about the same time?
No, it won't, it won't. This, this will be done by the contractors with, that are doing basically the project right now. But we'll come back to you at a future time to develop that parking as well.
Speaking of timetable, what's the timetable on, you know, do they have any idea on when the campus will be somewhat complete and the parking lot and DOT on the road?
Yeah, it's all, they're moving as quickly as they can on it. I know their goal, and you've heard them state that they want to be in that facility by 2000, the end of 2015. So then they're pushing as hard as they can to get it done.
Well, it's, it's looking good.
It's moving, yep. It's coming along.
You see, I have this vision of a, some way that without going across 127, we can get from that parking lot over to the bridge at the fire station somehow and never have to cross 127.
Well, if you remember, in the, in the design that was done as part of the Inspiring Spaces concepts, they exactly had that, where you could, I'm not going to do it justice, but you could basically wind up off of the sidewalk underneath the bridge and come up over, you know, loop around and come onto the bridge. I mean, you could actually do that now. You could walk, you know, from the parking lot back toward Main Avenue, back toward the mill redevelopment, and then just hop on Main Avenue and, just like you do in your vehicle, and walk across the bridge without ever crossing 127 at grave.
You have to cross railroad track up there somewhere, don't you?
Yeah, you have to cross the track, yep. And then you'd be on the sidewalk coming back into downtown. Yes, sir.
So we have our challenges.
Yep. There's, there will be, yep, opportunities to overcome, for sure.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve this construction agreement.
Second.
Motion by Wright, second by Meisner. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Any nominations, appointments? Matter's not on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that you all consider on your appointments, you need to designate a voting delegate for the National League of Cities meeting and an alternate if you, if you can. And we did not add it to the agenda, but we also need you to consider the same for the North Carolina League of Municipalities, which is October 11th. the North Carolina League of Municipalities, which is October 11th through the 14th in Greensboro. So if y'all could designate one of your members to cast those votes on your behalf, we'll pass that on to both of those organizations.
Well, once again, I would like to encourage council to go to these meetings. I know it is, it's time commitment. But I think we benefit from it in several ways. Not only the things we learned from the general session, but any of us can get on a special committee. I'm on the University Cities Commission and I've run a lot of things. I brought back one thought was that we move our relationship a little closer between L.R. and the city and we're working on that. Having said that, I am going to the League of Cities meeting in Austin, Texas. And I'm also going to the League of Municipalities meeting in Greensboro. But I would love to have somebody else selected as a voting delegate in attendance.
What's the date?
What's the date? The League of Cities is November?
Eighteenth, twenty-second, something like that.
Yeah, that's right. It's the week before Thanksgiving.
Eighteenth to twenty-second. And when's Greensboro is?
October 11th to the 14th. It's next week.
It interferes with the golf tournament a little bit. You really only need to be there Monday. I'm probably going to go and be there Monday.
Monday. Let me check my schedule.
It's going to be at the Greensboro, Greensboro Four Seasons, I believe.
It is. That's right.
But if somebody wants to appoint me as the voting delegate.
Somebody.
I would serve if it's for.
For both of them.
Someone.
Second.
Motion by Meisner, second by Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. I do, I encourage you to go. Particularly the meeting in Greensboro is not a tremendous commitment of time. You can go down there and spend the day. It's worth the money just to go through the exhibit halls and find out what the latest things are that the police department and the fire department and Chuck Hanson is going to stand up here and ask us. It's good to know if that $300,000 machine is really that much more valuable. But seriously, there's a lot we can learn there. Matters not on the agenda? General comments?
I want to thank the Hickory Police Department and the Catawba County Sheriff's Department for their assistance for the Carolina Cycle Challenge. They did a fantastic job and went very smooth. I've heard nothing but good, good things from that. It's good.
We had, I think, 700, 700 participants. There were 13 restaurants that donated food. It was a super successful day. Great.
Good community event.
Wonderful event. And I saw, I saw dads and moms hooking up those little trailers. It looked like the old, you know, the old teardrop trailer, trailers that we used to see, but we still see once in a while. It looks like that only sometimes, some of them had twins in them. And no, no casualties, right? Nobody got hurt.
Nobody got hurt.
Anything else?
Just mentioned the CBCC and the Furniture Academy. And what a tremendous asset that is to Hickory and our entire community. And of course, the governor was here and that was just a huge success and we look forward to seeing what comes out of that.
Might be some people not understand it. You want to talk a little bit about it?
The CBCC has a new program, I guess is what you'd call it, it's the Catawba Furniture Academy, where folks can, can go there that are specifically interested in learning about how to manufacture furniture and that type of thing here in our area. And I believe this is the first one of its kind in the state, of course, and maybe even broader than that. But it's a, it's a huge opportunity for folks that want to get back into that area of manufacturing to be able to go there and to learn a craft and a skill. And we were fortunate enough to be there the other day and see that in operation. It's just a huge benefit to our area and it goes right along with jobs and education and building population and all of those things that we're trying to do here. And, you know, hats are off to Dr. Henshaw and his whole staff over there and the vision that someone had over there to be able to bring that to our area.
About every four months, they will graduate 38. And I understand that every person who successfully completes the program and graduates will have a job. These are skilled jobs and the cost to train an individual one-on-one is not insignificant. But training 38 at one time and the five partner companies, it sounds like a who's who for our area. Lee Industries.
Vanguard.
Vanguard, Century Furniture, Shurl, and Lexington. And they ballin', not only are they funding this, but they also provide the qualified instructors so that at least 38 people every four months are getting a job doing something that they otherwise would not have known how to do. So it's a wonderful, wonderful thing.
Great program.
I haven't been to the Science Center to see the Furniture Well-Crafted exhibit. That's also pretty nice. Go build some furniture.
Yes, ma'am. Yes. And our contest is coming up, our Chair Design Contest is coming up. We're going to judge it November 4th at 10 o'clock. And then we will have 20 participants in that. And it will be, there's a reception the next day, the 5th, I believe. And it's going to hopefully be a yearly thing for, and we have 20 interesting manufacturers that are presenting chairs, design chairs. And we're going to take those and where are we going to go with them, Andy, throughout?
I think we'll put a lot of them on Hickory Well-Crafted side and kind of put the furniture today and some others.
Right. So put us back on the map again.
Well, today, we also had the dedication, the ceremony announcing the Health Science Facility for Lenora Ryan. It's going to be, be there between the old Holler Mill and the old Moretz Mill. And it's a partnership between Economic Development Corporation, Catawba Valley Medical Center, Frye, Hickory, and Catawba County. And they will be doing advanced degrees in nursing and then PhDs in various medical fields. And none of us were presumptuous enough to say that someday we can say we were at the first dedication of what became the university, the Hickory University Medical College. Of course, that's, that's long-term, but the jobs that will be coming out of that will be wonderful as well.
Also, with Homecoming, Circle K at Lenora Ryan, which is sponsored youth program of Kiwanis, they put together over 9,800 and some meals this past weekend in about a two-hour period for the kids backpack program for Safe Harbor and such. And I think, and they've got some other things going on, but the Homecoming there and Homecoming at Appalachian and Oktoberfest, it's going to be awful lot going on in this area.
And then before anybody catches their breath, the golf tournament next week, Greater Hickory Classic presented by Kia. Isn't that the name of it? And those of us who subscribe to some golf magazines, just the exposure we get through those golf magazines over and over again, the Greater Hickory Classic.
Golf Channel?
It's just one of, the Golf Channel, we get ads on the Golf Channel. So, but I will tell you something, we need to have people go out there. Those golfers like to have people watching them play. It's fun. These are legends. And they also, most of them, there's one or two that are really into the serious, they're so serious about the golf that they won't let anything else improve on them. The Rocco Media and a few of those guys, I mean, you'll have fun with them. They'll be joking with you and they're walking down the fairway. So if you get a chance, go out. If you need tickets, call me, 238-1465. We'll get you some tickets. I believe I can say that.
You just did.
I just want to find some tickets. Okay.
We need people to go out there and see that.
And I've heard murmuring that there's a ticket floating around this building, but I heard. I have not seen any of it yet. Anything else, folks? We got a lot going on, good stuff. Our community is wonderful, it's resilient, and we got to keep making good things happen. Also, there's a lot of good programs over there that those Hickory group, that kind of ballerina, check out some of those meetings, educate some about that. It's a big step for Hickory too, is the education. What's that? Motion by Jerry? Motion by Patton, second by Seager. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thanks to everybody for the energy.